Roll call, please.
Bastian.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Hausmann.
Here.
Parsons.
President.
Wakefield.
We have a quorum. If I can have a motion to approve the agenda, please.
A move.
Motion by Parsons, second by Hausmann to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving on, agenda is approved. Approval of the minutes from August 16th, the 20th, the 23rd, and the 27th.
I'll make a motion to approve?
Seven.
Motion by Hausmann, second by Bastian to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on to claims. Any questions on claims, folks?
Move to approve.
Motion by Parsons, second by Clark to approve the claims. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Got all that out of the way. Okay. So, as President of the Council and Acting Mayor, I'm going to change up the meeting format a little bit and make it a little bit different than Mayor Beasley's. So, under the Visitors and Timed Items, that is our time for public comment. Anyone has the right to come up and talk to Council, up to five minutes, on any subject that they choose. Please note that that will be the only time that we will have public comment at these meetings. The other night, we went to 10:15, and I think that that's kind of unacceptable. It's hard on the audience, it's hard on the staff, and it's hard on us. So, we're going to change it up. If you've got anything that you see on the agenda, everybody gets the agenda ahead of time, bring it up at Visitors and Timed Items because I will not be recognizing you when we are going through the business. You may not like that, but I'm only here for two meetings, and then the new mayor can do what he wants, or she wants, okay? So, that's what we're going to do. All right. So, Visitors and Timed Items, we're going to have the audit report. Hey, that is our favorite time of year. Come on up.
My name is Dwight Burglin. I'm one of the managing partners for the Quam Burglin Post-Certified Public Accounting Firm out of El Point.
Do you want this only five minutes? Usually, the audit report goes more than five minutes. So, you said visitor time, so this is not timed? You just want to make, okay.
I can quit now. Well, I hope everybody has a copy of the audit report. And the very first letter on page one is the independent auditor's report. The letter basically states that the financial statements that are presented are fairly presented in all material respects and according to general accepted accounting principles, which is a clean opinion on your financial statements. It's the highest opinion you can receive. I might mention, these are not my financial statements, these are your financial statements. I'm just reporting on them as part of the audit. The next section of the audit report is the management discussion and analysis that goes from page three to 13. And the office staff prepares these narratives and comparative statements and graphs, and kind of a thumbnail of the year 2017. Page 14 and 15 are the Gatsby 34 Statements, and this is a balance sheet picture of the whole city, all the funds and all the business activities, shows the fixed assets, the accumulated depreciation, and the debt. It's a little different than the, just strictly the governmental statements, which are on page 16, and 17, 18, and 19. These are, these statements are just the governmental statements themselves. Then we have the enterprise funds, page 21 and 22, with the income on page 23, and cash flow on 24 and 25. Then the notes to the financial statements, these are narratives that describe some of the balances in the statements. They start at page 26 and go on to page 45. Does anybody have any questions on the notes to the statements, or the statements themselves? The next part of the audit report are the comparative statements from the general fund, which is your original budget, the final budget, which includes any supplements or contingency transfers, compared to the actual amounts, and then the variances, whether it's overspent or underspent, on pages 46 and 47. And the street maintenance fund is on page 48. There are also schedules on page 52 of non-major governmental funds. These are broken down and reflected back in the financial statements. This is a little bit more of a breakdown of these particular funds, special revenue, debt service, and capital projects. And the special revenue, which is the 3 cent sales tax to 2006 TIF, Surface Transportation Program, the Branding Revolving Loan Fund, on page 54 and 55. The debt service is on page 56 and 57. The capital project is on 58 and 59. And then on 60 is the independent auditor's report on internal controls over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards. During the course of our audits, we look to make sure that the internal control structure is working as you intended it. We take a sample of invoices and trace them all the way from the beginning to the end to make sure that the transactions are being recorded properly. We also look at the compliance, to make sure that you're following the rules and regulations of the contracts and grants and loans that you have, and you are in compliance with all those requirements. There was a one material weakness, and that's a lack of segregation of duties. We had discussed this during the year and suggested procedures that, as a board, if you do these procedures, that we probably can get rid of this finding for next year. And I understand that that's being, have started to be implemented. Otherwise, on the letter on page 63 is your letter to the audit regarding the lack of segregation of duties, that you're aware of that, and you have other compensating controls in place to monitor. Are there any questions?
I do have a question. I'm not sure if it's for you, sir, or for the staff, but I've been aware of the material weakness for some time, and I understand on page 63, we talk about two council members to meet once a month to review the financials. And so, in your gentleman's opinions, that will relieve that material weakness?
There's a, there's a list of about 20 different items that the council, the council will be looking at.
Right.
And reconciling and comparing those numbers to the general ledger, reconciliations of the cash, make sure it reconciles and totals correctly. Credit cards, looking at their various invoices and credit cards, pulling invoices and comparing them to the actual check that was written to make sure it was written and cashed correctly. There wasn't any bogus vendor or ghost employees.
And how about, for example, just reconcile another statements, bank statements?
Yes. The bank reconciliation is done in the office. Starts with the beginning bank balance, and they have any outstanding checks or deposits that haven't cleared. So, you end up with an ending reconciliation of the cash, and that figure, that ending balance should be compared to the general ledger of the various, total of your, all of your funds that should total that reconciliation.
So, maybe this is a question for Brian and Christina. Is that the same person that does that every month?
Christina compiles it, I review it each month.
This is just requiring more board overview, more eyes on the financial statements, make sure things are working the way that you anticipate them to.
My other question, and this may not be addressed in here, but goes to, I mean, in this day of computers, we have drives instead of file cabinets. So, do we have private drives? Do we have shared drives? How's all that work with what you work with?
Right now, we have, most of it's on shared drives. We have some private drives, but we're working with monkey with the server upgrade to take a look at the structure of our computer network.
So, when we do that, would we have policies in place, like, for example, where I currently work now, you can have a private drive, but only certain information can be on it, and then the rest of the department has a shared drive that everybody has access to?
Correct. We'll take a look at who has access to which drives.
And is that something that will be reviewed with us at some point, or?
And then, have we been able to figure out how to handle the mail? Like, somebody picks it up, somebody different opens it, somebody different records it? We've got all that worked out? Okay, terrific.
So, my other question would be, so again, back to page 63, where the two council people, and right now, that's Barb and myself, are meeting once a month to review the financials. That's sufficient for you to get rid of that material weakness for this year?
Right, yeah. In 2018, yes.
2018. Are there any other segregation of duties specifics that we haven't addressed that we should be, other than that?
That, because of the size of the office, and that's why you're getting the lack of segregation of duties, you're just not, you know, everything is being done in the office by either one or two people. By having more people look at things, then we feel that we can eliminate that segregation of duties, if there's other eyes and other people looking at it and reconciling, then we feel we can get rid of that statement.
So, question, Brian, have we ever considered, or is it even feasible, to have somebody other than you trade off looking at the bank reconciliation, or is that just not, I mean, because we've got other staff other than Christina and Judy in the front? It's just something to think about. I'd like us to at least consider that.
So, the procedures that you're coming up with, that we've talked about, and you should have somebody do it each month and initial on date what you've done.
We are.
And if you find anything, that should also be listed. Because those are the things you want to correct. You want to make sure your statements are adequately nice and, so when we come in an audit, it's, we don't have to, you know, go back and dig up a whole bunch of other things.
Okay. That's all the questions I had.
I've got a couple of questions to clear things up. And this is our annual audit. We are audited every year.
Yes.
Those findings are submitted to the state.
Yes.
During the course of your audit, or your firm's audit, did you have unrestricted access to all of the information that you requested?
Before we come, we send a letter to Christine and ask for certain information and have access to it, and when we get here, we ask her to pull vouchers that we want to look at. We've never had any problem of her not finding anything. Everything has been orderly neat in the room where we come in and are able to sit down and start our audit procedures. As far as we've asked, we may ask for things that we think of or question during our audit, and we ask for those, that information, and it's always been available.
Did you find, did your firm find any evidence of misappropriation of funds?
No, we did not find anything that was misappropriated. Now, that isn't the same. We did not look at everything. This is not a forensic audit. There might be something there, but we, during the course of our audit, through the internal controls that we've used, through the sample testing we've done, there appears that there is nothing that is misappropriated.
And did your firm find any evidence of embezzlement by any employee, appointed official, or council member?
Here again, like I say, we did not look at everything, but through the sampling that we took and the reviews of all the invoices and the bank accounts, we didn't see any embezzlements. We didn't see any thefts of any kind. Doesn't say that it couldn't happen, because fraud happens every day. You always have to be aware of that, and that's part of the overview. So...
Thanks.
And then, the final question is, I come from a long line of auditors. What sort of room did they put you in? Because usually, we put you in a room without any windows, cold, not very comfortable, so to get you out of here as fast as possible.
Next to the furnace in February. Third floor of a school building in August? That's with no air conditioning. Actually, we were in this room over here.
Okay, I'm just...
Yeah, no, it was very adequate. Plenty of plugins, and the coffee was there and everything, so.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so it's nice to have that audit done again. Christina, we thank you for your diligence on that. There were years in the past where we were behind, many years, and now we are right on top of it. So, we appreciate that. Okay, based on my comments before, anybody that has any comments for Visitors and Timed Items, come now to the lectern or hold your piece for the rest of the meeting.
You might want to accept the audit report.
Oh, okay, all right. Hey, I'm just moving on. Let's get going. Okay, we got a motion, we got a second? Okay, we got a motion from Clark, second from Hausmann to accept the 2017 audit report. All in favor?
Just, can I?
Oh, discussion?
Yeah.
Discussion, okay.
I'm in favor of accepting it, but I want to continue the discussion to learn more about if we can do the actual segregation, you know, just like I asked Brian, if we can continue that discussion in the future.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, okay. All right, now, here we go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Audit report accepted? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Safe trip back. Okay, moving on. Anybody for Visitors and Timed Items? Don't see a lot of rustling in the chairs.
A little bit back there.
Anybody? Nope? Okay, all right.
I have a question.
Come on up.
Come on up.
Oh, Mindy Hansen, 317 Switchgrass Trail. Under number, under Visitors and Timed Items, number seven, social media discussion, so are we not allowed to comment since it's under Visitors and Timed Items?
Well, the mayor gets to set the order of what she or he wants to do. So, if you have any comments about anything on the agenda, she's asking for your comments.
Okay, I just wondered since it was...
So, if you have something on number seven, go ahead and comment now.
Okay. That's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you. Not at this time.
Heidi Jorgensen, 317 West Hackberry Street. Kudos to Acting Mayor Fish for setting the tone and establishing professional expectations for how meetings should go. I have served in a lot of committee work, and I don't believe good decisions happen after 9:00 PM. And having been in the audience at several city council meetings, my kudos to you for setting that expectation. What I think that expectation does is it encourages us as citizens to follow protocol. When we have questions or concerns, we should contact city staff. When we have questions or concerns, we should come to our ward representatives. When we have questions or concerns, we should come to the mayor and ask those questions, either by calling them on the telephone, or sending an email, or having a face-to-face conversation. And I know that the Facebook social media policy is on the agenda, and it is my very firm belief, as a lifetime resident of this community, that the business of city government, the business of building good relationships and a better tomorrow, does not happen on social media. You can use social media to provide information, to advocate and advertise for the great things that are happening here, but the business of the citizenry happens right here, and it needs to continue to happen here, and the city council needs to advocate that it happens here.
Thanks, Heidi. And to Heidi's point, I did fail to mention, you can always talk to us before the meeting, after the meeting, email, phone call. We are very accessible, I would say. I had a call from a little gentleman the other night and called him back. We will answer.
I've never stood up here at this podium. Jill Meyer with the Brandon Valley Journal, 1400 East Cedar Street. I was disheartened to read a post on Mr. Wakefield's Facebook page. I'm going to read it to you. How do we, how do we get everyone to know in town about this? And what they're talking about is perhaps the corruption hand happening here in City Hall. Well, it sure isn't through the local paper. The paper has an investor who is on the council. Yep, no big deal, though. It will be interesting to see how big of a deal they make about the council favorite, Paul Lundberg, in the paper. I bet the paper sends out a bunch of free copies to help push their favorite candidate. I'm all for the First Amendment, but when you are trying to destroy my business, or our business, and I do have investors in this business, people in this town that wanted a better local newspaper, a local newspaper to tell their community what's going on, whether it's in the City Hall or School Board, and Mr. Wakefield, I just want a response from you on record. Why are you posting something like that?
Several people have reached out to me and...
Several people? How many are several?
Dozens.
Dozens? Okay.
Several people have reached out to me with concerns on the practice of the paper pushing certain agenda items, and...
Can I have an example?
This is a prime example of the timing of this article, when all people have not had their opportunity to put in for the mayor appointment.
We've only had one, now two tonight officially filed. Both of those interviews are on the front page of tomorrow's paper. So, I don't get it. Any other response? I love this town, and I invested my heart and soul into this paper. I want to tell the people about the great things happening in Brandon, and I hope you want to help us tell these stories. I don't know if you remember, but after the city council, or I mean, after the chamber banquet this year, you came up to me and you said, Jill, what is it can I do? What can I do to help your paper? What can I do? This doesn't help my paper. I just want you to know that. I want to be the city record legal paper, and I will get it. I mean, I'm confident we're going to be your legal newspaper. And I want to work hand-in-hand with every one of you, and I want to help make this town grow and thrive and be the best it can be. But I can't do it when you're tearing me down on social media, and that's what I have to say. Thank you.
And just for information purposes, Gary and I are an investor in Jill's paper. We're very proud to be investors in her paper. She does a terrific job, and we feel it's very important to support our community. And I feel no shame in that, and if it comes to a vote where we put the journal as the public record, I will abstain. And I have sought legal counsel on that, and I am free to be an investor in her paper. Do I ever dictate what you're going to put in the paper? I got no clue what you're doing, girl, but you're doing a good job. All right, go ahead.
TJ Cameron, 2417 East Lopez Lane, Brandon here. On the social media piece, I just want to give some positive recognition to a lot of the recent information that the city shares on the official site. I think it's great information and great updates. I know some of that's come from Tammy, who's new to the team, and probably others participating as well, but I think that's been fantastic information, and I think it's a great source to share it directly from the city page. I think it does combat, like, a lot of negativity when it comes straight from the source, so that there's not somebody forming an opinion. Instead, we're sharing the official stance of the city. So, I just wanted to put some recognition out there for the recent efforts and the increased information, because it is helpful in a positive way on social media. So, thank you for that. And thank you, Jill, for making time to put me in your article tomorrow. They bent over backwards this weekend to line up an interview for me when she was on her way out of town, so I just want you to know, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, TJ. And I think, you know, we've talked about how can we get more information out to the public, and we're looking for sources to do that, so I appreciate your comments, and we'll continue to try to do that.
Speaking of that, this will be in your mailbox tomorrow. Kim Surwick, 812 Nicholas Avenue. The new Inside Brandon. In it is city information on your lawn watering still, leaf drop-off, and winter city ordinances as far as parking and snow removal go. So, we are partnering and working with the city, and the school actually, to help get more information out to the public.
I do want to make one statement, too. Jill, I'm so damn proud of you. You went after your dreams, and you went after your goal, and you do a fantastic job of being the Brandon Valley Journal and the face of the Journal. Thank you for all that you do, because you went after it and you got it, and you do a fantastic job. So, kudos to you.
Okay, anymore? Going once, going twice, three times the charm. Okay, we're moving on. We are going on to social media Facebook discussion. This isn't very comfortable for me, but as leader of the council, it's going to happen. So, I was made apprised of a rather interesting post over the weekend on Facebook by one of our council members. I don't do Facebook, but I was told about it many, many times. And I think that it is appropriate that a statement is out there in the public, and I think it's appropriate that that statement needs to be read for the record, because not everybody does Facebook. And then, I, as council president and acting mayor, will address the comments made in the post. After that, if other council members wish to comment, they certainly can. Again, I remind you, we are not taking public comment on this issue. So, Mr. Wakefield, I have a post here that I believe you wrote. If you can make sure that that is your post, if you pass one to Dana. And I would ask you to read it into the microphone for the record, so then I can address your concerns.
Posted August 31st, 9:56 PM by me, Mr. Tim Wakefield. During last night's briefing meeting, it was made blatantly clear that our current leadership is more concerned about protecting themselves than doing what's right for the residents of our community. Our city attorney is in the process of preparing documents that will ultimately remove power from the mayor, a position that is currently establishes and appoints the city staff as he or she chooses. Many of you have reached out, asking if I plan to throw my name in the hat for the upcoming mayoral appointment. I honestly don't see a point, since the council is already working towards safeguarding our existing city employees from any potential change. our existing city employees from any potential change. Similar to how the cabinet reports directly to the president, our city employees report directly to our mayor. Ultimately, the mayor is responsible for performing performance issues, but from what I have learned, the mayor will no longer have the authority to remove staff members who do not meet the basic requirements of their position. So why would anybody want to be the mayor in a town that won't allow him or her to select staff members? Back when Brandon was a smaller town, the staff may have been sufficient, but now that we've seen such growth, the lack of talent is obvious. This has been evident through the past 10 to 15 years, and more recently, we've experienced well failures and watering ban restrictions that have left us to a point where you're experiencing a dilapidated infrastructure. But you know what? We have two council members who have been seated for longer than anyone else, and they're literally patting themselves on their back because they have $5.5 million in bank reserves. So translated, this means we are hoarding money while continuing to allow our roads, sewer, and water systems to deteriorate. How noble is that? And why on earth are we paying interest to a bank for a tractor when we have available cash right now? Oh, and let's not forget a hockey association who will get another $100,000 in the coming year. And for Christmas this year, we'll be spending $35,000 for Christmas decorations, compliments of the Brandon residents. It saddens me to think that during this time of change in leadership, we would even consider recommending a change that protects city staff positions. Even worse, five members of the council seem to support the idea. This is a council where half have been appointed by their peers. Time and time again, this council has shown total disregard for public feedback. They have made their selections based on personal preference and friendships. It is a moral struggle for me to be part of such a corrupt city organization. Tim Wakefield, Jr. The opinions in this statement are my own. They do not reflect opinions of any individual or entity. That is the end of the post.
Thank you, Tim. Appreciate that. And these points are my opinion. So, Tim, may I ask, who were the two council members you were referring to that were patting themselves on the back?
The two longest sitting council members are yourself and Joe Hausman.
Okay, so let's just work through this statement, and just see where we are at. Okay? So Brandon's city government is what is called a weak mayor system. There are six council people and a mayor, and the council people are elected by ward, two for each ward. For four-year terms, staggered. The mayor is elected at large, so he or she can come from any place. And folks, just for ease of use, I'm going to say he, okay? I'm just going to be done with the he, she, or she, he thing. It's he, okay? I'm old school, sorry. Okay. And the mayor's job is to lead this meeting, to vote in case of a tie, because that's the only time they can vote, to represent us on various boards, make appointments, like if there's a park board opening, and to be really the face of Brandon. I wanted to put in there to kiss babies, but I got squelched by my editor, okay? And so the mayor is just one of seven. We are all at the same level. And so for the mayor to have a superior role is not the case. Now, the mayor does make a little bit more money, because he has to sign checks and plaits and that kind of thing. So the mayor makes $8,500 a year, and we council members make $5,200 a year. Did you know that, Brett?
No.
Hey, all right. He's spending-
He's writing it down. He's spending it up-
Spending that already. Yeah, yeah, okay. So in reference to taking away power from the mayor, we asked our city attorney, Lisa Marso, to look at how our ordinances are written, because we have kind of a weird thing. We have four of our employees that are appointed by the mayor, the city administrator, the city finance officer, the city engineer, and the chief. I asked Dennis why only four are appointed, and we never really could figure out where that came from. But those four are appointed, but they are employees. So we were looking at that. People that are hired have to be approved by the council. If you come to any of our council meetings, you will see on the docket, you know, the golf course needs somebody, or we need another lifeguard. We always approve those through the council. So Tim is incorrect when he says that the mayor gets to hire whom he wants. That is just not the case. It is a council responsibility. So when we hired Chief Cull, he is one of the appointed four. We treated him, he had to go through the whole process, the mayor appointed him, but the council approved him. Now, where my concern lies is not so much with the hiring, but the firing. So let's say I get mad at Chief Cull, and I'm the mayor. We've appointed him. He pulls my kid over and arrests him. There goes the college scholarship. Well, I'm not very happy about that, so in the interest of the city, I say, "I'm going to fire Chief Cull, and I can do it as mayor with no recourse from this group that you guys have elected." That is the problem with where we're at on those appointments. So to say that we're taking power away from the mayor, I say that we are distributing power to the council that was all elected, not just the mayor. So I find real issue with that. We are balancing power, not forming a corrupt government. Then it's been suggested that the mayor has a right to appoint his cabinet, like the President of the United States. I'll tell you what, folks, I want to stay as far away from Washington, D.C. as anybody. I do not feel that these are cabinet positions. They are not political appointees. We are hiring educated professionals to run our city. They apply for the job, interview, do the background check, and we, the council, again, not the mayor, hire them. Then they're reviewed, just like any other employee. To put people in as a political appointment, I think can lead to corrupt government. Now, if the citizens of our town say they want a different form of government other than what we've got, they can petition, come forward, and it can be voted on. That is an option. Now, let's move on to money. Money's kind of dear to my heart. Can you put that up, Christina? Okay, I know it's hard to read, folks, but this is going from 2010, oh, thanks, to middle of 2018. This is our cash reserve. This is our rainy day fund. This is like your savings account that you keep in your bank or credit union account for emergencies or opportunities, as I like to call them. Joe and I were called out deliberately in the post about sitting on a bunch of money.
We were hoarding money.
Hoarding money. Okay, yeah, okay. So you can see that it has slowly been building up over the years, and I'm quite proud of that. We've worked really hard to get that cash reserve built up, really hard. And our general fund budget for this coming year is, try to help work you through the numbers, is $6.5 million. So less than half comes from property taxes. Property taxes are pretty steady. We know what they're going to be, generally. So it's like a salary. So if you're on a salary at work, you kind of know what your paycheck's going to be like, and you know how much money you can spend. Sales tax, which is 45% of our budget, is totally different. It's like a bonus. If you have a good year, you got more income. If you got a bad year, not so good. And so when almost half of our budget is based on sales tax, we don't really know for sure what we're going to get in. We have some projections, but you know how projections go. If the economy goes down, or people are buying groceries at Aldi, or they're buying gas at Get and Go in Sioux Falls, we're not getting the sales tax. Now, in my situation, if I needed more money, I could go out and get a part-time job. Cities can't do that. We can only spend what we collect, so we have no way to increase our income. So if we have a poor year, we got to dip into our cash reserves. So based on research, it's prudent to keep three to six months' worth of expenses in cash reserves. So based on next year's budget, that should be about $3.25 million. You can see, at the end of 2017, we got $4 million. Pretty happy about that. So what did we do about it? In our budget cycle for next year, we decided to take $300,000 of those reserves, add them to our budget for some road projects. And we think that that's a conservative way to go, not dipping in too much, but using some of it. You know, the caution here is, go back to 2011. 2011, we had $1.1 million. That is pretty tight. Property taxes were down at that point, you know, valuations were down at that time. Fortunately, we had enough income to cover those expenses, but if we hadn't, we would have had to dip into the cash reserves. So it's always a challenge, just like in your own budgeting. How much should I keep in my savings account? How much should I keep in my checking account? But I was elected to manage your money prudently. And the last thing I want to do is say, "Oh, sorry, spent too much of the cash reserves. You know, we're either going to have to raise taxes, or close a swimming pool, or cut a couple police officers. Sorry about that, folks." That is not the way that I manage money. And so I appreciate Tim's fresh eye on the budget. There is never anything wrong with a fresh eye, but Joe and I have been through this budget cycle eight times, and I feel comfortable with our cash reserves. We will watch them, and if they continue to grow, which is what we want, well, then next year, we can do a supplemental budget, and we can say, "We got extra money. We can take a million bucks and go pave, or fix a street, or whatever we need to do." So we have that opportunity, and we will watch for that. This is a real new phenomenon for us to have cash, enough cash in our cash reserve, and again, I'm proud that we're there.
Pat your own back.
Yeah, pat my own back. Okay, moving on to hockey. Now, I'm sorry this is so long, folks, but there was just a lot of information to get to. So hockey. The original rink, you remember the original rink out at McCarty Park, was at the mercy of the weather, and hockey was having to cancel practices and games, and it was just a struggle. So hockey went out and raised $500,000 to put in a refrigerated rink. What a great idea! And Park Board thought we should try to help them with what we could, so we invested $75,000 for the construction costs. Lots and lots of hours were spent down at that hockey rink, trying to get it put together, and they did a nice job. Now, at a previous meeting, Tim stated that there was no public skating on that rink. Well, there was public skating on that rink. Over 120 hours of public skating was provided in 2018. Yes, hockey charged $5 per skater, or you could get a family membership to skate on the rink. However, we also charged to go to the pool. We charged for a baseball tournament, softball, soccer tournaments. No difference. So in my mind, hockey has done a fine job of trying to get some of our kids out there skating. So now they want to build an indoor hockey rink, which would be a fabulous thing to have in Brandon, for a tune of $1.7 million. That's a lot of money. A lot of the equipment from the existing outdoor rink can be moved to the new facility. So Park Board and City Council felt that it was appropriate to line item $100,000 for hockey if they raise $1.7 million. I think that's a pretty small investment on that dollar amount. And this is the way we typically work with our organizations. If they come to us with money raised, we try to help them with some funding. We do not think that that is excessive. So right now, hockey has 120 kids in the program. 15 are from Sioux Falls, because they couldn't get ice time in Sioux Falls. 60 of our kids are playing in Sioux Falls that maybe we could get back to Brandon, and so we could be up to 175 skaters. A third of our population is under age 18. We have to give them as many amenities as we can to try to keep up with the other communities. It might bring some people to town. So I'm not sure what the angst is about the $100,000, but Park Board is very passionate about it, and they make recommendations to council, and council has agreed to the $100,000. If they don't raise the money, it won't get used. Christmas decorations. Tim is correct on the Christmas decorations. There is $35,000 budgeted this year for decorations. Last year, we did, we did Split Rock, right?
Yeah, $8,300.
Yeah, we did Split Rock last year for $8,300. We want to do Holly this year. Think it'll be a little bit more than the 83, but I don't know. We were pretty rich on putting in $35,000. I don't anticipate us spending that much. But our residents seem to like them. For those of us that have lived here a long time, we had decorations years ago. They got tattered, we had to take them down, and I think people like having them up. So we thought that was a small price for something in the community. Now, moving on, city employees. This is the worst. I am deeply saddened that a comment by a council member would be posted online asserting our employees have a lack of talent. Guys, I don't agree with that, wholeheartedly. Do our employees do everything right? Of course not, but neither do you or I. To publicly humiliate them is beyond offensive. You know, we have a process in place. If we have an employee that's not doing a good job, we have a process in place. And I have been in the position of having to fire a couple people, and it's very, very uncomfortable, but it happens. It does happen. I don't think there is any basis for that statement, and if there is, I would like to see proof of it. You know, our people have really difficult jobs. They always get the unhappy calls. I'd hate to answer the phone at City Hall. Do they ever hear kind words? I think it's pretty rare. So to wrap up this lengthy thesis, again, I am sorry, but I felt compelled to deal with this tonight, and I know it's not comfortable for anybody. I've had a really good run on this council, eight years. We've gotten along fine. Tim, your Facebook post says that the council doesn't listen to feedback. I do listen to feedback, and the majority of what I hear is positive. And I'm not hearing anyone tell me that they believe decisions are made based on personal friendships, preferences, or some good old boy club. Just because I don't agree with your position does not make me a bully. I have a right to my opinion, as do you. But once we make a decision as a council, we need to rally around it and support that position. That's the way boards work, at least the boards I've worked with. You might have lost the vote, but majority rules in our system. Shoot, I've lost some votes, too. Joe and I fight about things here and there, and we have still learned to get along, right? So I understand that each council member has a right to voice their opinion, but I'm not going to spend my time, the residents' time, the staff's time, dealing with every little issue you have and correct all of your factual errors. I think I've pointed out several of them tonight. Your information is not always accurate, and maybe mine isn't either sometimes, but I'm just not going to deal with it and have to go through this all the time. If you have a question, you can talk to me. The public can talk to me, and we'll try to work out the issues. But I have found, as Heidi said, face-to-face is much more effective to get anything done, rather than to throw it out into the universe and let it blow up and create chaos. So for the residents, you know, Tim, I can't stop you from sending out misleading information, but I would ask our residents to seek out more than one so-called source of information. We are all here for you to talk to. There isn't anyone here that won't step up and answer your questions. We're in the phone book. We have email. We're here to serve you. The divisiveness needs to stop. We need to rally together. Brandon's a great place. You know, we came here for the school. We stayed here for the city. I love Brandon, and I'm really sick and tired of having to fight divisiveness when there just is no call for it. So that is my piece. I will ask if any of the council members have anything to add.
Thank you, Barb. I also have my comments to add about the whole post. I can't even hardly stand to talk about it. I would like to comment on the recent post from our city council member, Mr. Wakefield, Jr. To say I'm truly disappointed is an understatement. Barb did a great job of going over the numbers and all the facts, because there was false facts that were posted, so I won't go over them again. We have been accused of being the good old boys' club, which I actually find funny, as Barb and I are females, and we are now president and vice president of this council. So go ahead and call us the good old boys' club. I'm not sure where that even resonates from, but I will tell you, the good old boys' club did do a fantastic job with the city and got us to where we are today, so we can lead up to the future. Actually, one of the reasons I did run for council is because I grew up in this town, and I was kind of tired of the good old boys' club, until I got on council and saw what a good job they have done. And now it's time for us to go into the future without- And now it's time for us to go into the future without negative comments from this council person or anybody else. Change is happening. Not as fast as some have hoped, but it's happening. The previous council and this council have been accused of not planning for the future. My God, how horrible is that? Since Barb and I have been on council, 2010, 2011 respectively, as she noted, looking back at the numbers, our reserves again were 1.3 million, and at the end of 2017, they're at 4 million. We've increased our reserves by 3 million. However, as we've stated, Mr. Wakefield's phrase he used was patting ourselves on the back, and you're darn right we are. We are proud of the fact that we have that money in reserves. It didn't come easily. We knew projects had to be put aside because of it. We didn't like it, but we had to do it. And now this year, we're able to spend some of that money for some of the projects. That's what we do. That's what you have to do. In every household and government, there are times we need to save and times we can spend. This is a year of spending, since we have saved diligently. A shout-out to our city staff by being diligent in their budget requests and working through the tough and the good times. From my understanding, people are quick to comment when they don't have the truth in front of them, as in Mr. Wakefield's posts are half-truths and false statements. It causes distrust in our residents. Our residents, including all of you, deserve more than that. We deserve the truth, and we deserve the truth from council member and council members. Due to his ongoing rants on Facebook and the comments made by other people, I felt it necessary to ask for extra security at this council meeting tonight. Now, all of you and all of us are paying for that because of him being here tonight, and I want you to know that, all because of Mr. Wakefield's rant on Facebook and the posts that became of it. I do feel confident it is only a small portion of residents that are believing these non-truths that are being sent out over social media and possibly even talking to other people. The residents I have spoken to know that Brandon is a beautiful city to live in, work in, and raise our family in. They believe, as do I, this is the best city in the world. They hate to see the negativity be thrown out there. The people I have spoken to are anywhere from lifelong residents to new residents to people wanting to move here. They look at those posts and they laugh, and I thank them for that, because that's exactly what it is. It's laughable. We, as a city, are better than any negative comments he or anybody else can make. The fact that he lies, and again, Barb has went over the number, he falsely accuses our city staff and council members is an utter disappointment. We are a proactive city with growing pains from continual growth. I am proud to call Brandon home and will continue to do so for many more years to come. If we were dilapidated and infrastructure, as what he states, our city would not continue to go and flourish like what it has. Our forefathers and council members were diligent in planning for the future. Some mistakes were made, absolutely, but we all make them. Has that caused our city to shut down? Not that I know of. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we went one month that we couldn't water our yards. Well, that was in 2017. Since 1979, our population has grown from 2030 to an estimated 99.53 by the end of 2018. I would say that's pretty darn good growth. A lot of cities are folding where ours is flourishing. I am always the one to spin the positive out of the negative. Because of this negativity, we've actually banded together for greater good. As I have spoken to residents and other city council members one by one, we have fought for our city staff and have come together to fight off this horrible negativity. It is evident in the statements we make tonight. From the vast majority of the people I have spoken to, our residents love our city. However, not everyone can be happy. If you choose to speak ill-will of our city, you please come to any one of our council members and speak directly to us. We will give you the facts, and we will give you the truth. Don't believe social media. Don't listen to one person. Do research for yourself. You all are smarter than this. Educate yourself. Knowledge is power. In this day and age, people seem to jump to one conclusion based on one person's statement, even if it is false. I am proud of our city administrator, Brian Reed, our finance officer, Christina Smith, our public works director, Raleigh Hooky, our police chief, Dave Cole, our park superintendent, Devon Coughlin, our city attorney, Lisa Marso, all of our hard-working staff members, police departments, city council representatives, and the residents of our beautiful, growing city we call home. Please do not let the hatred of one person and negative comments of other people ruin your perspective. Brandon, South Dakota is a growing, prosperous, beautiful city, and I am proud to be a city council representative and vice president of this council. Don't let hate win. Goodness will always prevail. Thank you.
Thanks, Barb and Joe. I do not want to live in the past except to learn from prior fact-based mistakes. I don't think it serves purpose to say this and that should have been done based on a personal opinion, and that's why we're in the condition we are now. As a council person, I would like to set policy, see that our staff follow the policies, and then consider changes as policy and times change, circumstances change to just the normal course of time. Because we all may disagree from time to time, doesn't mean that we, the city council, can't work together for the betterment of Brandon. Thank you.
So my stance on all of this is pretty simple. I believe that we need to focus on solutions. It's really frustrating to have our group divided when it just doesn't need to be divided. I've only been sitting up here for three months, and I didn't know any of the council or any of the staff prior to 2018. But in that short time, I feel like I've come to have a working and respectful relationship with the council and the staff. As has been said, we're not going to agree on every single topic, but we all want the same basic things for our community, or I believe we do. I'd like nothing more than for us to unite as a team and focus on our solutions and goals, treat each other respectfully, and make positive things happen for Brandon. But it isn't about what I'd like, it's what the city needs. And I think the city needs for us to be a team, working together towards common community goals. The city needs for us to focus on solutions. If there were mistakes or delays that happened years ago, so be it. We're all human, we all make mistakes. I've learned that there's always a lot more information than just what's on the surface. We really need to focus on the things that are in our control today. We need to let go of agendas and grudges today. We need to come together today. Doing anything other than those three things just hinders our ability to move forward, and we're a better community than that.
First of all, I'm just gonna expand on some research that I did for the Hockey Association in terms of just getting a better understanding. The $75,000 from the city was recognized and approved by the Park Board and approved by the city council, and that was used for construction costs and equipment for the outdoor facility where it currently is at. In discussion with them, there are some items that might be able to be taken to the new facility when they raise that money. Those items would include the possibility of moving the chillers, the benches, the sheds, the lights, the rinks, and the boards. The west rink, as I understand, would stay in place, and it could be used as an east-side rink with the garage and lights. The trailers could possibly stay if indoor locker rooms are constructed and could be used for warming houses. The east-side rink lights could be transferred to the new indoor facility with the idea of being used for a future outdoor rink if the Hockey Association chooses to pursue this in the future. Just wanted to clarify that. Now, here's my statement. At the time I turned in my application for the open Ward 1 city council position, the only council member that I would have considered a friend at that time is Tim Wakefield, Jr. So his recent post on Facebook, "The city council has total disregard for public feedback when it comes to the appointments for open city council and mayor positions," and that those positions are based on personal preference and friendship and inferences of not knowing me during my interview and at the appointment night is somewhat hurtful. I met Tim around 2014, as we shared a natural affinity through our combined passion of hunting and veterans. Tim demonstrated key qualities at that point that we looked for in a Warriors Never Give Up board member: passion, hard work, honor, and commitment. These are also some of the same values that I deem important in the people that I call friends. Due to those values, I asked Tim to serve on the Warriors Never Give Up Board of Directors, where he ultimately became the vice chairman. Tim was a good board member, and he's a great idea guy. Tim, you know me. You have been to my house, and you have served with me. It saddens me to read and hear the half-truths and to see what has happened in the recent months. I know that you possess passion, determination, heart, and desire to serve this community. I can see it in your body language and in the things that you say and do, especially when people disagree with you or don't share the same set of priorities. Each person's viewpoint is unique and special, and when shared with others, brings enlightenment and diversity in which powerful growth and change can occur. The city, the people, the voices are important to each one of us sitting here on the council. Brandon is the place we call home, and we have chosen to raise our children. Throughout all the names, half-truths, and smoking guns that the city council and the city employees are still here, willing and humbly ready to serve. We are still here because we love the city and we want to make a genuine difference because we are excited about the challenges and the future that we face. Nothing that has happened in the past or present is unfixable. We need to stay focused in the moment and plan for the future so that we can move forward towards the goal and heal open wounds. I am not sure if there's not one person in this room that has not made a mistake or two in their lifetime. The scars that I bear for the battles fought serve as constant reminders of where I've been and where I'm going. These failures has ultimately led to my personal victories and has shaped me into the person that I am today. And in case you're wondering, I'm still a work in progress. To have an opportunity before us to check egos at the door and to learn and grow together because the most important aspects of this great city are the people that we serve. The city, its employees, and this city council are all passionate about the place we call home and are eager and willing to work together for a better future. Every voice does count. And in those 10,000 voices that drive us to do the right thing, to hang in there with a half-truth and attacks, to see this to the end. Life is challenging, even when things go well. But our life journey is not about wins or losses or about keeping score. It's about our community, our people, our unique set of goals and values, and our diversity. Each of us has a vested interest in this community because it's where we call home. And if we're lucky, our children will also call it home in the future. It's a wonderful place to raise a family, and even with all the challenges that we face, it's still the place that I choose and I'm proud to call home. In closing, I firmly disagree that the city is corrupt. The decisions we make as a council are not based on friendships, personal preferences, or protecting any specific employee, but rather through a collaborative process of working together. I, for one, look forward to the day when the entire council can do that, which will help to make Brandon a better place tomorrow than it is today. And just one thought. I think John Kerry this morning hit it on the nail this morning when he said, "Truth is the essence of facts." Thank you.
Councilman Wakefield, any comments, or we will move on?
No comments at this time.
Thank you.
I do have a question. Mr. Wakefield, when you say that we are corrupt, where are you finding that factual information from, or where are you finding your information from?
No comments at this time.
So no comments at this time, but you chose to post that on Facebook. Did you happen to reach out to DCI? Did you happen to reach out to our police department? Did you happen to reach out to any kind of law enforcement activity whatsoever? But since you can say no comment, I'd be really interested to know if you did reach out to anybody.
I've reached out to individuals in the past.
And individuals meaning who? Who have you reached out to? DCI, Sheriff's Department, police officers? Who have you reached out to? Quit giving generalities and give specifics.
Okay, we're gonna move on. All right, moving on to, unless you had something else, Tim? Okay, golf course. I saw Zane here someplace.
Okay, I might have some possible good news for our air conditioning unit. So Brandon Plumbing and Heating came out, and one of their technicians did a system check on it, and it basically is not performing up to what it's supposed to. He thinks we have leak in our refrigerant, so we was low. So he filled it up, and he said these units are common for having leaks. But he said next year, if it is low again, he'll look for the leak, but he said it could go five years before you might need to look for the leak. So we might be able to get by with just using the air curtains instead of the actual air conditioning units. So that saves us quite a bit of money. And if we do that, it's probably gonna be around $41,000. So that's quite a bit lower than what the initial bid was for the unit.
Was that from Brandon Plumbing and Heating?
Correct.
For the air curtains?
Correct. And the insulation.
So are you recommending that we go ahead and try that? What do you think?
I would suggest that, because if that does the job, then we don't really need the units. But if it doesn't do the job, we can always add the units later. So we won't really have a good test until next year when it gets hot again. So right now, we don't really have a good test for it, so.
I would certainly be supportive of adding those air curtains.
Do you want to clarify how many? Because I just remember last time, because I don't see if we have anything up there exactly, so if you could...
There's three air curtains. One in the main entrance, and then two in the back doors.
Okay, we got a motion by Parsons, second by Clark, to buy three air curtains for the golf course, try to remedy the air conditioning problem. Any discussion?
And that purchase will be from Brandon Plumbing, correct?
Correct.
Purchase will be from Brandon Plumbing and Heating, using a local business, which I always like. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, Zane, good to go on that.
Okay. Next stop is the financing. Is that correct? Okay.
So I have a couple of different options for the financing. The tractor only through John Dearwood. Three different tiers there, three different percentage rates. We can do one or both pieces with First National Bank at 4.48% for five years, both pieces at Wells Fargo for 5.95%. I just propose we go with First National and keep one loan, keep it simple, and actually the interest rate is better for the five-year term. You can do a monthly, not as fine. I did not get an amortization schedule from First National Bank yet. If you were comfortable with First National, you just make a motion to go with them on the monthly payment schedule.
And I don't have a loan contract, but is there a buyout penalty or anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, we discussed this before. What's the pleasure of the council?
I'll make a motion. We go with Christina's recommendation for First National Bank.
Okay, we have a motion by Clark, second by Housman, to go with the purchase of the tractor, actually tractor and the airifier with the loan from First National Bank, 4.48% for five years. Any more discussion?
Do we have any additional funding available since we took, like, the Redwood project? We're not doing that this year. Is there money in the general fund that we could be purchasing and avoiding the cost of the interest?
Well, they're two separate funds, so that would be the general fund, and this is the golf course fund. If you chose to pay money, you'd have to do a transfer from the general fund to the golf course fund to pay for it. So that's up to council.
Any other discussion?
I'd rather stay with the golf course fund than the maintenance.
All right, so we've got a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right?
Kelly would like to hire another maintenance person to help get him by the rest of the year, Jeff Tabbert. I think we're in pretty good shape now after hiring him. Should be okay for the rest of the year. Yes.
I'd make a motion. We approve this hiring of Jeff Tabbert.
We approve this hiring of Jeff Tabbert.
We have a motion by Parson, second by Clark for the council to hire Jeff Tabbert. Any discussion?
So on this one, it doesn't say the wage. Do we know what the wage was?
Starting is 10.
10:15.
10:15, okay.
Anybody else?
Can we make sure that?
Okay, we got a motion and a second to hire Jeff Tabbert at 10:15, an hour. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Okay, thank you.
Police committee, what do we got? Anything? Oh, here comes Chief. Hey, Chief was out in the park yesterday pulling his bagpipes, sounded pretty darn cool.
I'm not sure what the noise ordinances are in the park, but no one asked me to leave. People were walking around and stopping and visiting and keeping me from my practice, but that's okay. I enjoy doing it. Couple of things, the pickup that we have is still in the build process. Most of the equipment should be this week. And then when is it going to the?
September 12th.
September 12th, it'll go and get its markings. It might be on the street for a little while with just a black pickup and lights and all that good stuff, you know, breaking in period, so I can get used to it. Because it's probably the one that I'll be driving for a few months. So watch for that. The other thing I wanted to mention is we recently sent Lee Henning off to firearms instructor school. We've, since Barry retired, we've been without our own firearms instructor. We've sent another individual there. It's a very rigorous course and he didn't, he wasn't able to make the qualification shoot. I've had it described to me, I don't know if I'd make the qualification shoot for this. Lee managed to pass and so we're back to having our own firearms instructor. We've been using a county deputy, that's an instructor in the meantime, to make up for that. And so we're happy to announce that. And I think we'll have a, we've got a couple of shoots here coming up. Any questions?
Where did he have to go for that training?
It was out in Pier. It was a week-long training. I have absolutely no, I know that the day before his final qualification, he fired off about 500 rounds getting ready for that and went through the course three times the third time, which is not unusual, a third time he made it. I think there were two people that didn't, invested that time and that effort that did not make qualifications. They'll be able to go back to it later on and do that. So one last thing, I'm just gonna offer up here. And I've been here for 10 and a half years, maybe a little bit more. I've got a few months left and I'll probably be retiring sometime in April. I haven't put together the full document yet, but I just wanna speak out and say that during the time that I've been here, one of the things that I've always been impressed with is the quality of the employees that we have working for the city. You know, I look at the public works people, they aren't real pretty. But I have seen them, I have seen them work. I came from 30 years in Sioux Falls and I would put these guys up with anybody that I saw in Sioux Falls. A lot of the people in Sioux Falls were specialized in their, in their tasks. They might be working at the water purification plant, they might be working at Water Rec, working on the streets. And so they're fairly specialized. A few would have some cross disciplines, but they, you know, people at Water Rec might drive plows in the wintertime when they needed the streets cleaned. These guys are kind of the masters of, a jack of all trades and the masters of many. And you will see them doing everything and anything. And I've always, I've mentioned that a number of times to people, that I've been very, very impressed with the work that they do. Also been impressed with the rest of the staff that we have. And I just wanted to put that out there and my voice of support for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. It's nice to hear that, since you were coming from a different depart, you know, different town. I think a lot of us have, you know, always been here, so it's a little hard to understand that, but thanks for that. Anybody else for the, anything for the chief?
Please pass along our congratulations to Lee for passing that. That's a big deal. It's a lot of work and we appreciate the hard work he did leading up to it. So thank you very much, Chief.
And he has his permission to be as hard on me as possible. I've never failed a qualification and hopefully I don't in the, in these final months. Thank you.
And you know, Lee Henning is a real success story because Lee Henning is a Brandon Valley graduate, went away and came back and now has two young children and raising his family here. And I think that says a lot for the police department here and also for the city of Brandon. So we're glad to have him back. If I could only get my kids back, that's what I'm hoping for.
I don't have any more openings right now.
Got accountants, Chief, they're not gonna fit in. Okay, moving on, park and rec. So we've got the work, work report and Devin is lamenting all of the rain because he is mowing all of the time. Do we have anything on that? Devin, you're good?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll have a park board meeting at the end of the month, so we don't have a report from there. Did you have something, Tim, on that?
Devin, you had mentioned something about, sorry, looking around, there's legitimately something that you can spray on the grass that slows its growth down, that could help you potentially on some of the park areas to reduce the mowing needs?
Yeah, Kelly put me onto something that we might try next spring.
Yeah.
I mean, typically this time of year, the grass should not be growing like it is anyway.
Yeah.
So usually, you know, when I still have my full staff, we have plenty of people to help take care of it, but now we're a skeleton crew and struggling to keep up. But we're, we're getting there.
Yeah, and I think in the parks, I know that you guys are pretty tight, so, but you know, I think you've been keeping up the best you can and I appreciate all the effort getting the guys on the mowers. I had one resident say that the grass is looking a little long and I said, "It's coming around the corner." And sure enough, it was the next day he mowed it. So we were good there. So thank you and the guys for doing that. That's much appreciated, so. And then mosquito spraying, how late do we go into the year?
Typically, we stop at the end of August and then we just kinda play it by ear. You know, if it gets warm again and we have another hatch and they're bad, we'll go out. If not, then we'll call it a year, but we'll kinda just see if we have complaints or what people think.
Yeah, no, I think you just went out here this past week, right?
The last week in August, we did, yeah.
Okay, fair. Thank you.
Devin, you wanna talk about that? That bid for the skate park?
Yep, he's from Winnebago, Minnesota. You might feel like get that from the letter, but yeah, he wants to buy a couple pieces of the skateboard park. Right now, it's sitting out back behind the park shop. It's been sitting there for five-ish years, give or take. Yep, I say if anybody wants to buy any piece of that, I think we should jump at it and make it go away because all it's doing back there is slowly rotting and falling apart.
Okay, that would take a motion from someone, please?
I'll make a motion that we jump on that and make it go away.
Okay, a motion to jump on that, okay. To sell two of the ramps for $600 out of the skateboard park? Any discussion? Oh, I have a motion, but did I say that already?
Yep.
Motion, did I say that?
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
On that, is it 600 total for all the pieces or 600 each?
Total.
For the two? Okay, so we're not doing 1,200. I just wanted to make sure because it's kinda confusing in the write-up, but, so we're gonna accept the bid for $600 for the components that he listed, which were the two ramps and the wedge and the half pyramid planter. So that's on right?
Yeah, it's two total pieces.
Two total pieces, okay. All this skate park talk, so.
Any more discussion? Call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that gives you some space, Devin. And then the athletic field lights?
Yeah, those are the ones that came down from A. They're just sitting out in the grass now. They're not all of them. We actually do have some more that are still up on the poles. Some of the poles, they left up because they're shared between A and B and A and D. But the poles are too tall for us to reach, so if we wanted to get them down, we'd have to hire that done. But I'm comfortable getting rid of these. Typically, we like to save a few old ones for spare parts. If we need some spare parts, we still have those. There might be another 10 up that we can take down whenever the time is right to do that.
Okay, we've got a motion from Parson, second from Bastian to accept the bid of $1,051 for athletic field lights going to Hills Beaver Creek. Any discussion?
Do we know how many that is or do we have a quantity to go with that, Devin?
We do. I don't remember it off the top of my head. Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, okay, thank you.
And there was another community interested, but we did clarify with them, they didn't, they didn't submit a bid.
Yeah, I know, it was the baseball folks had someone in line and.
And I did, I did clarify that. So if we have some more, you know, maybe they would be interested in taking them down and taking those.
Yeah, and Kelly actually at the golf course said he knew somebody who was interested also, but by this time, it was already past the deadline.
Okay, all right. Okay, did I do the motion? Okay, Pam, geez. Oh, and did we vote?
No, we haven't voted.
Okay. Hey, I only got one more meeting to go. Okay, I'm calling the. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Devin, you got rid of some stuff.
Good.
Okay, anything else for parks?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, great, thanks, Devin.
Yep.
Tammy's working on a policy that we could use to solicit engineering proposals on projects. So when we get that drafted, we'll get it, we'll get it to you. Next item, social media policy. We've got, I've got three examples back or three emails back from communities Mitchell, Vermillion, and Pier. Still waiting for a couple of others. And then we've got a meeting scheduled with AE2S on Thursday. No, tomorrow, Wednesday. I lost a day during the week. So they will be providing us with some of their policies that they've helped establish. And if you remember, Thursday night at the briefing meeting, I asked for a couple of volunteers from the council to help sit on that and maybe work through some type of social media policy. And I can't remember who volunteered. I remember you, but who was the other one? Okay, Dan and Joe.
This is more coming from the state. They wanted some clarification on just what we use for accounting procedures for the transit bus grant. So this kinda just sets a resolution on, yes, we do follow the state statute laws. Yes, we do follow the Department of Legislative Accounting Manual procedures. And then the state says audits must be done at least every two years and we find in the best interest of the city to complete every year. And internal controls are put in place such as the finance, financial committee does a monthly basis audit on the financials.
I guess we need to make a motion first and then discuss.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, motion by Parson, second by Wakefield to approve resolution 1218, discussion. Okay, hearing none, we'll call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Okay, Christina, you're good to go.
Ordinance 569 is the budget resolution for fiscal year 2019. These totals that are shown are based on the last budget work session we had a week ago. So include all of the projects and expenditures and transfers that were discussed at that point in time. If anybody would like a copy of the budget, we'll be more than happy to get it to them. You need a motion? First consider, first reading?
Make a motion to approve the first reading of budget ordinance 569.
So I have a motion by Housman, second by Bastian to accept first reading of budget ordinance 569, which took lots and lots of time. Any discussion on it?
What was the final number of the transfer from the general fund to the golf course?
To the golf course?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember what that ended up being as a final amount.
350?
Any other discussion, questions? Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, first.
We clarified that the rep for the Brandon Community Fund is Joe and she would like to continue in that capacity. And then appointment of auditing committee. Barb, since you are the president of the council and signing checks, we will take you off the auditing committee for this month. And I believe, if memory serves me correctly, Brett volunteered to serve for this month. So you can make that appointment if you want to. Yes.
So I would like to appoint Brett Bastian to the auditing committee. Do I need to specify the timeframe or?
You don't have to, if you just stay on there.
Yeah, you can just take that over, Brett. I'd be okay with that. We'll just leave, we'll just leave it open-ended. Is that all I have to do?
Yep.
Okay. Duly noted. Okay. Committee?
Slurry Steel will have a small change order, so I don't have that ready yet, but it'll be for the next meeting, if we can push that.
What do we need to do about Alliance request about the reimbursement? Are we, where are we at on that?
Well, Alliance, you've got a letter on there on page 101. Alliance has submitted a request for reimbursement for 50% of the cost of a traffic study that was conducted by HDR for their property at the intersection of Split Rock and Aspen that they are currently developing. So they, DOT required a traffic study for them to develop that parcel as there are a number of accesses on to state right-of-way. They have, the cost was $14,945. They've submitted a request for the city to reimburse them 50% of that cost.
We haven't done this before though, right? We haven't, we haven't reimbursed anybody or any other businesses before, have we?
Correct, we have not. If there is an entity that required a traffic study or if we've required a traffic study for a subdivision or development, we have not reimbursed that cost. We did do our own traffic study out at Heritage and Sandstone a number of years ago that we paid for. That was our own request, but we have not, to my knowledge anyway, reimbursed anyone for a required traffic study for a development. Is there any benefit to the city for reimbursing those costs and is there any benefit to the city in terms of what the results were of the study?
You know, there's always a benefit to a traffic study. At least it gives us a plan as to what we should be looking at in the future for that intersection or that area. There's a benefit to every traffic study that gets adopted, so we can compare that development and make sure that the appropriate.
development and make sure that the appropriate streets, street controls, traffic control devices are in place when it's fully developed. So, I mean, there's always that part.
I guess we haven't done it in the past. I kind of would hate to set a precedent to do it.
And in this case, realistically, it's more related to the state than it is the city due to the proper...or the road being the state's road, not the city road, correct?
Correct. The DOT required the traffic study. They do have some concerns with that property and how it's...I mean, it's getting to be a tougher and tougher intersection, so there's going to be need to be some improvements at some point in time. So they wanted to make sure that whatever is proposed for this parcel, they can plan for that in their improvement in the future.
I am going to go forward then and say we do not reimburse a portion of that traffic study back to Alliance.
Motion?
Motion.
I got a second, someplace?
I'll second.
Okay. Got a motion from Housman, second from Wakefield, to politely decline paying for 50% of Alliance's traffic study. Any more discussion?
I guess the only discussion is that, you know, being it's the state and the state requested it, it would be more prudent to head towards the state in this case. It's...the benefits are truly to the state, not to the city of Brandon.
So we can make that suggestion to them? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Water restriction status, Raleigh?
No.
No. Slurry Seal, she said that that's going to wait, right?
Oh, that's going to wait, sorry.
That's going to wait.
The numbers that we've been having here the last five days, seven days, I think it was, I apologize, I didn't get it out to Dennis today. I forgot about it at the end of the day, but we were tracking down on our usage. I want to say, as of the second, we were down to 645,000 gallons, and then on the third, we jumped back up to 848. So...but with the rain today and possible rain good part of this week again and part of next week, the way it sounds right now, we should be okay. So I've had a few more watering exceptions come in. There's probably close to 60 now. And that's including wells and stuff, too, though, so that's...I just put them all on that same exception list, so...
So what's your thought?
I contacted the pump people again today with the holiday. They said it didn't get shipped to them yet, so he's hoping tomorrow he will see it. And he's trying to work out his schedule as quick as he can to get it here, so...
I mean, if we waited till the pump was installed, the next meeting is the 17th. That's a couple weeks. I mean, we don't have to wait for that. I don't know. What does the council feel?
So I think the last meeting, we authorized Raleigh and staff to automatically remove the restriction as soon as the pump was installed. I believe that's the motion that was made. So I don't know that we have to do any further action.
Anything else?
Nope. Not on the water stuff, so...
Okay.
This declares our intent to reimburse expenditures with bond proceeds for the water tower projects. And I apologize, I was going to amend that from 9.7 million to 10 million. So when you make that motion, just say we amend it to $10 million estimated cost in resolution. And this allows us to begin work on the project. We've already incurred costs for engineering on it. And then when we finance it with bonds through...or a loan through the state revolving loan fund, we will reimburse ourselves for those costs that we've already incurred.
I will make a motion to accept Resolution 13-18 with an amended amount to $10 million.
I'll second.
Motion by Wakefield, second by Clark, to accept Resolution 1318, amended to $10 million. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, got that done.
One more thing with wastewater, anyway. If you remember, we had a working session on water projects, and then we delayed the wastewater projects working session until we got done with the budget, or we're done with the budget. So we need to continue on with our wastewater work session where we can prioritize those projects that we've got listed or that we've got at least on the books. Would next Monday work? Yeah, Joe's going to be gone on a nice trip. This coming Monday? Yep. Six o'clock? Yeah. Six, six o'clock? What we planned on doing, three total sessions, one to prioritize the water projects, one to prioritize wastewater, and then one to look at those impact on the rates for those priorities.
Okay, can we make, if we need another one on the 26th?
Yep.
The same night as we're doing the meeting, the candidates? Okay.
Okay. So the 10th? At 6 o'clock for wastewater work session? Oh, boy. Exciting stuff.
All right.
And Brett, did you have something?
I just wondered if we can go to executive session for personnel?
There's been a call to go into executive session for personnel? Do we have to make a motion?
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion, go into executive session for personnel.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Housman, second by Parsons, to go into executive session for personnel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And then we shut this off, right?
Yeah, and then you just go like this. There you go. Just like that.